I'd like to call the Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, April 24th, 2013, to order. Tonight is the annual reorganization meeting of the Board of Education. Can we have a roll call, please? Mrs. Witkowski.
Mr. Nielsen.
Here.
Mrs. Klein.
Here.
Mrs. Larson.
Here.
Mrs. Schleter.
Here.
Mrs. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Alexandrovic.
Here.
And I'm here.
Thank you. Has the meeting been properly posted?
Yes, it has.
Thank you. Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Item three on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Klein. All those in favor of approving the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item four is the oath of office. Tonight, we will have the oath of office given by Mrs. Witkowski to Mr. Alexandrovic and Mrs. Klein and Mrs. Larson. And if you'd all like to come up to the front, that'd be great. But we'll do it one at a time.
One at a time?
One at a time. Are we good? Do we face each other or is this raise your right hand? Raise your right hand. Alan Alexandrovic, do you swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin and will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of school board member to the best of your ability so help you God?
I will.
Melissa Klein, do you swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin and will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of school board member to the best of your ability so help you God?
I will.
Nick Larson, do you swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin and will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of school board member to the best of your ability so help you God? Thank you. Congratulations. Item five on the agenda is community comment. Per Board policy, we allow up to 15 minutes of resident comment. Would anyone like to make community comment tonight? Hearing none, we'll move on to item six, election of the 2013-2014 Board Officers. Officers will be elected by secret ballot. If there is only one nomination for an office, we will proceed with a voice vote. A second on a nomination is not needed. If there is no objection to this format, we'll proceed with the election. Are all Board members all right with this format?
Yes.
All right. The first office is President. The 2013-2014 President will preside at this, at the point of the election. Do I hear any, oh, the ballots in front of you, you only have to check off one of the nominees and then Megan will collect the ballots. Are there any nominations for President?
I'd like to nominate Janet Evans for President.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations for President? Then I will close the nominations and then we'll take a voice vote. All those in favor of Janet Evans for President, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstentions.
Okay. We have five yes, two abstentions, zero no. And I will continue as President for 2013-14. The next election is for Vice President. Do I hear any nominations?
I would like to nominate Tim Nielsen.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Okay. Hearing none, we'll close the nominations and take a voice vote. All those in favor of Tim Nielsen for President, please say aye. Vice President, sorry. Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstentions? All right. Then the vote is, oh, okay. That should, it should have been a secret ballot, but I guess it doesn't have to be. Then the vote is 6-1 and Tim Nielsen is our Vice President. Thank you.
There was only one nomination.
I know.
I think you can still say no.
She can still say no?
There wouldn't have been a need for a secret ballot.
I knew it was a voice vote. Yeah, she, she knew. Okay. The congratulations, Mr. Nielsen. The next office is for Treasurer. Do I hear nominations for Treasurer?
I'd like to nominate Melissa Klein, please.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Linda Witkowski.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, please check off either Melissa Klein or Linda Witkowski on your ballot and Megan will collect the ballots. One vote for Linda Witkowski. One vote for Melissa Klein. Two votes for Linda Witkowski. Three votes for Linda Witkowski. Two votes for Melissa Klein. Four votes for Linda Witkowski.
And five votes for Linda Witkowski.
Thank you. Congratulations, Linda. The final vote is for Board Clerk. Do I hear any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Amy Schleter.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll close the nominations and we'll have a voice vote. All those in favor of Amy Schleter for Clerk, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Amy Schleter is the new Clerk. Congratulations, Amy. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is approved, reorganization approval items. And the first one is the designation of the 2013-14 district depositories. This is an action item. Mr. Milzer.
Each year, the Board has the list of bank depositories to come before you to approve for the year. These are the banks that we have been using. The change from last year is we dropped Johnson Bank from the list. We had them on the list in case we were going to use them. We wanted to take a look at them. We did that. They did not provide better service than we were already receiving at a better price, so we dropped them from the list. And we'd like to continue with J.P. Morgan Chase, Harris Bank, and U.S. Bank for 2013-14.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve the designated 2013-2014 district depositories as recommended by Mr. Milzer?
I would make that motion.
We have a motion by Mrs. Larson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nielsen, is there any discussion?
May I just make one suggestion that we change, or we add BMO in front of Harris? Just keep it official.
Sure.
What's the change in the name?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
And I want to thank Jim for including some background information on the listing.
Yeah, it'll be on there in the future now. I've got it on the form. I'll just redo it each year.
Okay. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Evans?
Aye.
Mrs. Klein?
Aye.
Mrs. Witkowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Alexandrovic?
Aye.
Mr. Nielsen?
Aye.
And I say yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Item B, designation of the 2013-2014 district newspaper of record. Mr. Milzer?
I'll take that one.
Oh, sorry.
We traditionally just have one newspaper to select from and we are recommending the acceptance of the NOW newspapers, which covers Franklin, Green Deal Hills, Corners, Oak Creek, and so on by CNI Publications. There are requirements that they have to have a certain circulation number. The NOW meets those requirements, actually is one of the only ones who does. And we use those infrequently, but it's our recommendation to approve NOW as our official newspaper.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to designate the 2013-2014 district newspaper of record as the CNI NOW newspaper?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Schleter, is there any discussion? I would, I would like to ask why we don't do the Journal. We did use the Journal during the resolutions for the referendum, didn't, did we not?
I think we used them once because of the timing.
Yeah.
Just the timing?
Yeah, because it's a bi-weekly and so on. And the other thing is, the reason we don't use them for other things is price. Extremely costly.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, may we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Alexandrovic?
Aye.
Mrs. Larson?
Aye.
Mrs. Klein?
Aye.
Mr. Nielsen?
Aye.
Mrs. Evans?
Aye.
Mrs. Witkowski?
Aye.
And I'll say yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item C, approval of the 2013-2014 school board calendar. Dr. Patz?
The calendar dates are the important thing here. The content and some of the reports that'll go on there with our Directors of Principals, we're going to meet to solidify that in the next couple of weeks because we've changed some things around and we want to make sure that they're done in a timely manner. So instead of having them on there and then making changes later on, we want to try. Of course, it's always subject to change to solidify those dates on the calendar with a little bit more certainty so that we can move forward. So right now, the important thing that you're looking at is the dates of our Board meetings.
Do I hear a motion to approve the 2013-2014 school board calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve the calendar.
Motion by Mrs. Klein, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Larson, is there any discussion?
Should this have all the dates? Because I'm just looking at this starts with 9/11/13, right?
School year.
School year? Oh, school year, thank you.
Well, actually, it's probably calendar year, but starting in September, right?
It should be from July 1st to June 30th.
The calendar from 2012-2013 goes through August, so this one begins in September.
Okay.
Does, do administrators at the schools look at the Board calendar when they're, when they're planning things like a future discussion item on the agenda? The, okay. Any other discussion?
And it's subject to change, right? We approve it essentially every agenda. We have future dates.
Right. We've had it. Well, the Board can vote to change if needed. We've done that in the past. Okay.
There won't coming up tonight.
Pardon?
We have a vote coming up tonight about changing the date, so yes.
All right. May we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Alexandrovic?
Aye.
Mrs. Witkowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Evans?
Aye.
Mrs. Klein?
Aye.
Mr. Nielsen?
Aye.
And I'll say yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item D is appointment of a Board delegate for CISA 1 Board of Control Annual Convention. Have not yet received information on the Board of Control Convention meeting yet. They usually send it out by now. Did you, Dr. Patz, it all? Okay. What this delegate does is they attend, they're required to attend one meeting, which is usually on a Tuesday in May. And I'm thinking it might be the 14th. And you vote on what, who the officers.
I think it had in there, it was the 21st, didn't it? Didn't it have, it had a date? You saying that date might change?
Well, it's, that's, well, it could be the 14th, it could be the 21st. Their regular meeting's on the 21st.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I did put that on there. So what they did was they shortened their meeting to two, it's two hours instead of two and a half as it was last year. So all you do is you go and you, you vote on electing a permanent chair, you adopt a convention agenda, you approve bylaws, and then you, you elect at-large representatives. And this is in Peewaqui. And then if you would like, if you would like to be an officer for CISA, you could put your name in also to do that. And then you would, once a month, attend a meeting in Peewaqui. So I need to appoint someone. I wanted to know, is there anyone interested in that being a delegate?
I would be available this year. I know that I was going to be the delegate this last year and Melissa had to fill in for me.
No, that's WASB.
Right. I know it's a different function, but.
So this is, so this is for Tuesday. So if you would like to be the CISA one.
I would be available if, if anyone else wants to do it, that'd be fine.
I looked it up, it's Tuesday, 21st at 6:00 p.m. Board of Control meeting.
Well, this is, this would be the convention. I think it's going to be on the same date because they have two boardrooms for that night, so I have a feeling it is. So if you are willing to do it.
I would be available and willing to do it.
Okay, then we will appoint Mr. Nielsen as the CISA 1 delegate. Thank you. And when I get the information, I'll pass it on to you.
Okay.
Okay. Item H is the consent agenda. Would anyone like, would a Board member like to remove any item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to approve items A through E on the consent agenda?
I would make that motion.
We have a motion by Mrs. Larson, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Schleter. Usually, we don't have discussion, but I did want to make a comment because of Dr. Miller. She wanted to make sure that you read your personnel report this afternoon to see that there is an addition on that of the Assistant Principal for Forest Park Middle School. So I just want to make you aware. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries.
Mrs. Evans?
Yes.
Can you repeat that motion, please? Who made the motion in a second?
I made the motion. And Mrs. Klein, did you, oh.
Mrs. Schleter.
Mrs. Schleter, second.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking. Item nine is school board announcements. Does anyone have an announcement?
Well, I did want to share that I did attend the grade, I believe it was a roundtable meeting, what kind of cafe meeting at the high school, which I thought was very informative and had a good discussion with parents and Chris and Mike were at our tables, so I think it's an exciting change that we're making. Although, well, it's an exciting change, I'll say that. I'm not certain on the timeline, but I'm sure we'll be informed of that soon. I think Melissa, you're on that committee. So I wanted to share that. And then also understand there is some workshops available at WASB. I don't know if anyone plans on attending that, but we all got that, right? It's close by, so. Is that one in Peewaqui? Yes, it is. Country Springs Hotel. I don't know what the sign up, the deadline is, but I'm sure it's soon.
Are there any other announcements?
Mrs. Evans? I'd like to just remind the Board of our annual dedication dinner on May 30th. You're all invited to that event at Tuckaway and we hope that you can attend.
What time?
We begin at 5:30.
Thank you. I'd also like to announce that I'm going to pass out the ad hoc committee special assignment sheets. Megan copied these and handed them to me, so I'll pass them out tonight and if Board members can fill them out and return them to, at the next meeting on May 8th. So I'll pass them out at the end of the meeting. Thank you. And school board calendar, we have the regular Board meeting on Wednesday, May 8th, 2013, here at the ECC at 6 o'clock. Regular Board meeting on Wednesday, May 22nd, 2013, here at the ECC at 6 o'clock. And item C, oh, in discussing the school board calendar, right now, we'd like to discuss the June 12th, 2013 meeting date change. And you were asked to bring a calendar to discuss that. And Dr. Patz, do you want to start it off?
Well, the purpose for that change is it's the same night as our eighth grade graduation, which is always held on the last day of school, so that's how the conflict arose. We're proposing that the Board either have, just move the date to, from Wednesday to either Monday or Tuesday of that same week. It's still important that we have that meeting, the first meeting in June, so it would be our recommendation to ask the Board to take a look at Monday or Tuesday of that week, the 10th or the 11th.
I know I have both nights open.
I'm available either night also.
I am also.
I am also.
I'm available Tuesday.
I'm only available Monday.
If I can make it available on both.
Both? Okay. Okay. That is a, a meeting where we discuss the budget, is that correct, Mr. Milzer?
That's correct.
Amy, I could make it Monday if it was after, if it was like 6:30. I don't know if that's a problem or not.
We've got preliminary stuff that will probably get us to that point where if you came in a little bit late, we'd be all right.
Okay.
So we could put the budget later on the agenda?
Yeah.
I'll try to make it by 6, but.
So the consensus is Monday? Okay.
That's the 10th, right?
Monday, the 10th. Thank you. Next is item D, discuss border treat dates. And we were looking for the first border treat date to be in May and we had discussed a four-hour time slot for a weeknight. So.
I'm now available the week of the 19th. The whole week gone.
And I'm not available the week of the 11th. Or 12th and 13th. You know, for me in May, I have 6, 7, 9, 23, and 30 are the five that are available. They're the best available. I don't know if that's congruent with anybody else's schedule, but.
I'm available the 23rd.
I'm available, you know, okay, I'm available the 7th, you know, with your schedule, Tim. What about the last week of May? And how are you, Dr. Patz, too?
It really depends on where you probably got something going on all the time, so.
Actually, the 30th is the dinner, so that night's.
You say the nights, Tim? Melissa, did you?
That last week of May is, is really problematic for me. I have music events three nights in a row and it's Memorial Day Monday, so that's a holiday. I would, I would be inclined to do that first full week in May since everybody's going to be in town if we can find a night that week.
How's the 7th for everyone? Melissa, you're okay? Tim's okay? Are you?
That is the night before regular Board meeting, so just keep that in mind. That would be two nights in a row. We'd be here.
It's a, it's a early in the month meeting, so hopefully, usually they're short. So you said, you said okay? And then Linda, Mrs. Larson?
It would be okay, but it wouldn't be my first.
So what's the date you're talking about?
7th, Tuesday, the 7th.
What about Monday, the 6th? Is that equally as comparable?
Monday, the 6th?
Then it wouldn't be a back-to-back?
That would work for me.
That's okay with me?
I agree with me.
Alan, too?
Monday, the 6th, better?
Better, better.
Better? Yep.
Dr. Patz?
I'll make it work. I've been having problems with my calendar on here, so that's why I'm just being a little bit.
Oh. Do you want to go again and come back to this?
No, that's okay. I'll make it work.
And then whichever administrator can come.
What's the time? 5 to 9 or 6 to 10?
I think we're thinking 6 to 10, but we can go 5, 5:30 if people can make it. But if you're working, you have to be able to get here.
To be honest, I think you should plan for three hours instead of four.
Three.
I think Florence Williams has overkill.
Add too much value after.
And it depends on what you have on your agenda. So I would say from 6 to 9 would be appropriate.
6 to 9? Okay. On the 6th, 6 to 9.
Just to play devil's advocate here for a second, that's only a week and a half away. Does that give us enough time to put an agenda together?
I think so. As long as, you know, we can get two or three key topics of what the Board wants to discuss and I'm sure there's plenty to select from.
Do you want Directors to attend or just Board members?
Do what?
Do you want Directors to attend or just Board members?
Well, that's up to the Board.
Well. How's the Board feel about that?
I think it depends what's on the agenda. And I, it's nice to have them here, but that's pretty close, so people may have plans to, but I don't necessarily expect that they need to drop everything to be here. How the rest of the Board feels.
Why don't we determine what the agenda is and we can address that with the Directors?
I think if you have any ideas for the retreat, if you want to email them to Dr. Patz and, and to myself, and then we can start there.
But I would ask that you do that soon?
Yeah.
Like before, next Monday? I mean, that's, that's five days, that's plenty.
Okay. And then if any administrators, I wouldn't feel bad if you can't come at this short notice, but I, I'm not opposed to any administrator coming, but I don't know.
It's been helpful in the past when you've been there, definitely, so.
Did we want to schedule another one possibly? Did we want to schedule another one possibly at the retreat? You know, future one, instead of tonight? That's a good idea.
I don't think anyone has their calendars to schedule one tonight.
Yeah. And we're thinking before the school year, but over summer, so was that the thought? Thought that was what our committee had recommended, or? I guess it might be a good idea to see what we do at this, accomplish at this retreat before we schedule another one.
Yeah, why don't we see what comes out of it and then go from there?
But it'd be good to try to get some date, so we're not at the last minute. Thank you. Item 11, reports and presentations. We have Dr. Miller with the human resources report.
Getting opportunity to look at the documents in Board Docs. There are two things I'd like to cover this evening. The first is staffing report with regard to our FTE for classroom teachers. And the other item I'd like to cover is just to provide you an update on the compensation study. So if you'd like to look at the worksheet that was posted in Board Docs, I can give you some information about what's happening for next year. At the elementary level, essentially, there is very little change in FTE. Our band program is slightly increased at the elementary level, and that is due to the fact that Robinwood is such a large school, and there are so many students in fifth and sixth grade taking band, that we've now reached a number where we're going to need to run two band sessions simultaneously. There are 71 students who want to participate in band, and that's far too many for one band director. So that would explain the slight increase in the numbers for band. With regard to the FTE that was put in place this year for first grade, if you recall, we hired two halftime teachers because the numbers were high in first grade. And those teachers work half-day and support literacy development for the children in first grade. Currently, they're not included in the FTE. We're going to watch those numbers over the summer, and when it gets to the end of the summer, we're going to determine again if we need to bring those halftime teachers in to support the children. We do, and we're beginning to see residents moving out, so it's really prudent to wait and see if the numbers do decline before we sign contracts and employ people to work for the next school year. On the right side of that elementary block, you'll see what we have for our classroom support, CWD recommendations. We will need to be adding another halftime special ed teacher to Pleasant View Elementary School. Their population grew quite a bit this year with regard to new special ed students, so that addition is needed at that school. Moving on to Forest Park, again, there's, you know, a small increase in FTE. You'll see that we actually have just one less section of computers. And trying to see what else I can share with you there. It's pretty similar to what it was last year. And there is no change in the CWD or support staff for Forest Park.
Moving on to the.
Is the math work though on total FTE for Forest? The change is .32, is that correct?
Yeah.
It snows at the 12th.
Right, the FTE from 1213 was 3522. The total FTE for 1314 is 3554, which would be the .32 increase.
I only see a.
With the net difference column.
Yeah, I see the net difference column is, so there is a formula that is amiss here. And I will check that, and I can let you know what that might be. I think one of the cells must be, have a formula that's not correct, so I will check that.
I believe it's the computer.
You would think it would be less, not. So I'll check the cell for the formulas. There really was no significant changes at the middle school for FTE. With regard to the high school, because of the number of courses that are offered at the high school, it always varies quite a bit from one content area to the next. The most significant increase at the high school happened in physical education. We have many more students enrolled in physical education classes next year, so that was quite a significant increase. And then in other areas, depending on what the students enroll in, there were some decline in the FTE that's needed. So in total, their change in FTE is .5 for classroom. With regard to support and CWD staffing, I have highlighted there that we have a halftime person working in what's identified here as computer resource. This is actually an individual who's doing a lot of work helping teachers to integrate technology, and it's simply not enough. I and the administration are seriously looking at increasing that to a full-time FTE. Teachers are very eager to integrate technology, and in this one person, for such a large staff, 75 teachers, working halftime is just not adequate. So we are seriously considering that. So I highlight it for you this evening, so you are aware that that's the direction we'd like to go in. So that essentially is our staffing report. I believe we've done a very nice job of maintaining adequate staffing, staying within our budget parameters, and keeping within class size while our enrollment has continued to increase.
And I think that's an important point that we got to remember, that we have to remember, excuse me, that this document before you tonight is very fluid. In a month, it could change dramatically, because we could get additional students, and we are a growing district, so we always have to, on an annual basis, be prepared for not only additional programming, things that we need to have in place for the existing students, but we're going to have more existing students. So please don't get tied into numbers and, you know, that we had this on, you know, this particular date, and all of a sudden it's an increase, because it is very, very likely that that'll happen.
Can I ask what the pathways coordinator?
Yeah, excuse me, I meant to mention that.
Education for employment, I'm reading that correct, is reducing that, and is that an offset, or?
We still have the Ed for Employment position. We're determining whether we need to have someone have that release time or not. I've taken it out right now, but we may be putting that back in. It's still a very important function. The pathways coordinator is related to an initiative that the high school is getting involved in, and you will hear much more about at the next board meeting. Perhaps Dr. Katz would like to.
Yeah, on May 8th, when Nick Cohen presents the personalized learning, that's all integrated into that particular program. We have a definite need to do something like that. It's something if we don't, we're missing the boat in terms of curricular programming and just programming in general for our high school kids in terms of skills and so on. It really reaches into a greater depth, working with our community partners, getting people to work with our students. For example, we have a number of people in the engineering profession and others that work with our first robotics, for example. But today's education and that 21st century learning definition really has to expand that we get all of our business people, no matter what that business is, it makes no difference, to be working in line with what we're trying to put together in terms of programming curriculum in our schools. So Nick will give you a real good presentation on that on May 8th, and I think he'll bring it real clear into focus.
You also are adding additional personnel on the RTI?
Correct. There are title funds that come to us that allow us to do that, and Mr. Zurich believes that there's a, or Dr. Zurich believes there's a strong need for us to increase that kind of support at the high school.
And I guess I don't, I don't, do we approve new courses? I don't recall that we, which one did we approve? Maybe you could just summarize.
I believe when the curriculums are brought forward.
In November, you approved new courses, so it was quite a while ago.
The music ones, for the music? They're starting to merge together, sorry.
Right, right. And any new courses are approved at that time, but it tends to be what areas in review that you hear from. And we've kind of gotten high school in alignment with adding new courses only at a review cycle, so it's very rare you hear of any others.
The other document that was attached was our enrollment update with regard to K-12. And you can see what our sections look like at this time and what our class sizes look like at this time. And as Dr. Katz had mentioned, very fluid document. As I had mentioned, you know, people will move out. We'll have growth, but we'll also have people move out, so any given grade level could change significantly. And the other piece of my report this evening is just to provide you an update on the compensation study for teachers. As you're aware, we've been working on this since October of 2012. We're working with some consultants from a company called Verisite, and you've had the opportunity, most of you, to meet with those consultants. Since October, we have had constituent interviews. They've interviewed over 30 of our teachers in hour-long interviews. We've had a focus group with our teachers to allow them to share their ideas. And then finally, we had a session called Ideas Facilitation. And we had a large group of teachers, I believe there were 20, who actually helped us shape some ideas for a compensation model. Our consultants met with us and provided us all of the feedback that they gathered, and we took that along with the information from the Ideas Generation session, and we've begun to build a model for teacher compensation. And actually, tomorrow, we are going to have a meeting with our administrative team, and we are going to have them look at that model and provide additional feedback on that first draft of a compensation model. We intend to continue to build that model over the summer and come back in fall to share that model with you. I have listed here through, November through March, it would be our intent, after the board sees the model, that we spend a lot of time talking to teachers about it, what it looks like and how it works, and we'll probably still have more pieces to build at that time. And our goal then would be to implement the new compensation model in September of 2014. Really feel it's necessary to involve our staff and spend a great deal of time communicating what this change would be. So it is our goal then to implement the model in September of 2014. In addition, it allows for us to consider any budgetary impact in that particular budget. With regard to our hourly employees, I'm beginning the same process with our hourly employees. On May 16th, our consultants will be back to meet with our hourly employees to do some one-hour interviews, and then on May 29th, they'll do a focus group with them as well. They'll provide that input to us, we'll work to build a model, and bring that forward with the teacher model next year at some point. So we're continuing to build the compensation model, and I will keep you updated.
Do we have a question, or? So the state also has some direction, or is that, is teacher evaluation different than this then?
Yeah, the state is not addressing compensation at all. They're providing the structures for evaluations of teachers, which would be part of a compensation model, that each individual school district is designing on their own, essentially.
I guess I'm not real sure what the difference would be. Compensation model then is just the pay scale and the, what the state, evaluation model relates to how you move through the, what's the, are you doing those separately?
Well, the evaluation model gives you information about teacher performance. The compensation model can go beyond that. It can include information about how the teacher's performing. It can include how you compensate people for doing things outside of their normal duties. It can set salary thresholds. It goes way beyond what the state is building right now in terms of just measuring teacher performance.
And the evaluation model is one of the, where we're being like a test district, or we're working with the state in that?
Right, we are, we've been involved in the developmental pilot, and we'll be involved in the pilot next year as well.
Thank you very much. The next item is Instructional Services Report, the annual assessment update. Mr. Zoma, Dr. Zoma?
Thank you, Janet. There's two purposes for this report. One is to understand the changes that are going on, because there's many changes going on in the world of testing now at the state level. And the other is to understand the results to a certain degree. So changes in results. And whenever I'm working with groups of teachers or a group like this, and we're talking about test scores and data, people get sick of hearing it, but there's a caveat about not avoiding overinterpretation. We want to not hang too much weight on any one number. Patterns and trends are more important, and that's what we're looking for. In terms of the changes, the No Child Left Behind legislation is behind us now, because the state of Wisconsin has applied for and received a waiver from the responsibilities that came with No Child Left Behind, and it, we're one of many states that have done it. Along with that, we're no longer dealing with terminology called adequate yearly progress. We used to have this chart of every year you had to have continually going up in proficient plus advanced scores up to 100% by 2014, and that's gone and replaced by the waiver requirements, which are the, come along in the form of the new school report cards. And you saw a sample of school report cards based on the fall 2011 WKCEs. And the report cards, school report cards that are coming for the fall 2012 WKCEs will not be here until August. So they're not part of this report. I'm glad that the word "update" was used in here, because our data coming in on various tests is more, going to be more scattered than it was. So we will, you know, have a one larger report like this each year, but then as we get other things, we'll provide the board with them as we go. Another change is that this report is shorter by 12 or 14 pages, partially because the historical data on WKCE is less significant now, because the cutoffs have changed. And so a lot of pages of historical WKCE things have dropped out. And as you can tell from the little chart that was in the report, the WKCE is going to be gone after another year. We just had our second last year of it. Next fall will be the last year of it, and then in 1415, we're starting with a new accountability test at the state level called the Smarter Balance Assessments. Okay, so those are two reasons why the report is shorter. Our older WKCE stuff isn't applicable anymore. Another change in this report is that we replaced a test that we used for GT identi, yeah, gifted and talented identification and background information on students. We give a test in third grade and sixth grade, and we replaced the Otis Lennon test, it was called, with another test called the Test of Cognitive Abilities, or COGAT. We had our psychologist and GT coordinator and I worked together to research this and found that this test is better for us. It's, more districts are using it. It's out of the University of Iowa, it has a higher top end, it's given online, and we get the results immediately, instead of this business of sending, you know, paper in to be scored and waiting eight weeks. And so it's just better all around, and we got our first year of implementation with that. So the COGAT is new. Another new piece on here is something that is required by the state of Wisconsin in kindergarten. It's the PALS test, or stands for Photological Awareness Literacy Screening. And it's actually came out of both education committees and the governor's office and a reading committee that they had. And this was one of the, one of the requirements where kindergarten, all kids need to be screened with this particular test. So it's administered at the beginning of the year. We've got another administration coming up in the spring now, at the end of the year, and it's optional in the winter. And it's optional in the winter. So that, those, that test is new and it wasn't on there before. So the first few pages of this report have a purpose of getting at the changes. This whole transition from the WKCE to the Smarter Balance Test and the changes in cutoffs on the WKCE. Because sometimes this is, this is lost in translation about scores going down. And so in four different places in this report, it's explained in one way or another how the student achievement and performance is the, is the same. It's being reported differently. Now, I say the same. It's the same in any moment in time. Hopefully, achievement continues to rise. But on any, any set of test results, all the scores are based on, for the WKCE, based on a three-digit scale score that is fixed. And it rides right through all of the grades, starting at around two, two-hundred-twenty is one of the lower scores on up into the eight hundreds. And for reading and math. And what the Wisconsin did back in two thousand one or two thousand two was to place where proficient and advanced and minimal and basic were on that scale at locations where it was pretty easy to be proficient or, or advanced. And Wisconsin took the beating for that over the years in having low standards. It wasn't necessarily low standards. It was just an easy placement of the cutoffs. And, and now with the waiver, in order, part of the reason why our Wisconsin waiver was approved was because those cutoffs were placed where we're raising the bar, so to speak. And they're placed in a way where students actually have to have a higher scale score to be at a proficient level or to be an advanced level. But the scale scores are the same. It's just the cutoffs changed. And so that's why we see our percentages of proficient plus advanced that are reported out from the nineties, which most of our scores were, to half of that, or in the sixties or seventies sometimes, based on an individual grade level or a subject area. It's not much of a consolation, but it's some consolation that every school in the state and every district in the state is going through the same thing. We embrace this challenge. Where all of our programming is geared to continued achievement, regardless of how it's reported. But we do track those scale scores, even though there's a change in where the cutoffs are. And there's a chart in the report that shows that tracks one class in reading and math from when they were, our current tenth graders. It tracks them from when they were in third grade to tenth grade. And those scale scores just go right up. And so the scale scores actually give us a more accurate and more consistent view than these more or less arbitrary replacements of the, of the cutoffs. The cutoffs were chosen to be closer, more closely aligned with a national test called the National Assessment of Educational Progress, or NAEP, it's called. And so we say these scores have been NAEP-ized. And that means that the, the cutoffs are higher. It's more, it's like more difficult to have a proficient score. And when we switch over to the Smarter Balance Test in fourteen, fifteen, those scores are gonna be NAEP-like or NAEP-ized as well. So this is like a transitional time with the WKCE to get ready for that. Okay, so that, you know, that's a big change. And underlying it all locally, that's accountability testing. We use a balance assessment system. Where yes, there are accountability tests and standardized tests like the ACT. Then we also have a middle level of tests that are common assessments at the district level and MAP fall into that middle level. And the most useful and productive tests are those at the classroom level where teachers are assessing on a consistent basis as part of an instructional feedback loop. How are you doing? Here's how you can get better. And then we check again. So that, that constant checking for understanding that research supports is much more important in terms of assessment than an autopsy like the WKCE or something that's given as an assessment when the learning process is over. So that balance assessment piece, you know, brings us to some of the results. And there's a little summary section in the report. I'd just like to highlight a couple of things because these are the kinds of things that you might get asked about. Or if somebody says, hey, how are Franklin's test scores? A couple of quick summaries can help you first. We're consistently above the state average on the WKCE in all of our grade levels and all of our subject areas. We have experienced a, we're beginning a trend. We've got two years in a row of higher writing scores at tenth grade, which is part of the, the work that Linda Latour in that high school department has been doing. The eighth grade and seventh grade teachers have been doing them since the review has been out there. We had a noticeable and relatively large increase in ACT scores. To jump a point five, a minimum of point five on every subtest in our ACT scores. And so we went from a twenty-three point oh to twenty-three point five. And these, this test is not made to measure growth. This test, the kids are different every year. And these, to move a point or two is very difficult with the ACT. Now the challenge is to maintain that through a continued strong curriculum and good teaching alignment. And another thing that helps with ACT performance is practice. The way it's set up now, our kids will have four formal practices with the ACT before they take it. We now have the explore test, which is a mini ACT in eighth grade and ninth grade. And then the plan test, which is a step, the next step up. Then they do a mock ACT and then finally take the ACT on their own. So, you know, we're hoping to continue that, that upward trend because it is one of the coin of the realm kinds of tests. And, and kids need to perform well on there if they're moving to the next level in formal education. We have a big increase, seventeen percent increase in the number of students participating in AP, AP exams. And Mike Noack tells me that we're gonna have another large increase in the kids from this year who are taking AP exams. And we'll see that in next year's report, too. So it went from, what did it, it went from two-hundred-seventy ACT tests to three-hundred-fifteen. So forty-five tests jumped in one year. All of our ELL students have performed well enough as a group to where we, as a district, met our targets for ESL programming. And you might have heard this at the ESL report, but we have targets on every, on students moving up in their language proficiency level. There's seven language proficiency levels from a one, you know, no English language at all to a seven, which is a native speaker. And kids have to get to, you know, a five or a six before they're exited. So we're responsible for exiting X number of kids each year. And we're responsible for moving each kid up a notch. So we met all those targets and have continued to meet those. That's a tribute to the staff. And something that's not in the report, because the scores came out just yesterday, were the WKCE scores for other districts. And I'll send you this whole chart, but I could just highlight one, one thing in comparison to last year because it's interesting to us that how the new cutoffs are going to affect us. And the hypothesis was that they would not affect our rankings too much when compared to other districts, and they really don't. Last year, in the fall of two thousand eleven, of, if you took reading and math at each of the seven tested grades, that's fourteen scores. Seven tested grades, reading and math in each one. That of those fourteen scores last year, all fourteen of ours were in the top five in Milwaukee County. And this year, eleven of those fourteen are in the top five in Milwaukee County. So it's not quite as stellar, but it's, you know, different kids at each grade level. But the point is that the, the new cutoffs didn't affect our, our rankings too much. Most of our scores are still in the top five in Milwaukee County when it comes to percentage of proficient and advanced on the WKCE. And then obviously, we're interested in continuous improvement all the time. And we measure it with all of these tasks. And there are, there are areas, it's my creditors. The areas that struggle are our subgroups. It's, it's like this in just about every school district where minorities, special ed, ELLs to a lesser extent here because we've got pretty, pretty good services, struggle. Low-income students. And just about everything we do is geared towards assisting with that. Specifically though, there's a couple of things they put in the report that used to address it with, I don't know if this is in the report or not, but RTI is a, is a, something that can really help the kids. We have like Core Plus at the middle school. And some of these things, lesson study, are newer. And we're not sure yet how much that's gonna help. But these are directly there to provide individual assistance to students who are struggling regardless of what group they're from. And so it brings us to what's next. And there are some changes, I talked about changes that have already taken place. And there's, there's some changes that are coming, too. One is that PALS that I mentioned, it's new at kindergarten this year. It's gonna be extended to be required at first grade and second grade. So that may have an effect on what we do with MAP testing. At that, we have to find out more about what MAP, about what PALS does at those grades and then try to determine whether we need to keep MAP at those grades. Another new thing that, that's coming, depending on how the governor's budget turns out, is that we may, there may be funding for ACT tests for all kids at the high school level. Right now, it's kids who wanna take it. We have eighty-some percent of our students taking it on a volunteer basis at a testing center on Saturday. It may become a, a test that all students take in all public high schools in Wisconsin if it survives the test of the budget that's going on right now at the state level, as you know. If that happens, then they'll also fund the tenth grade plan test and, and the ninth grade explore test. Things that our district is paying for now, those would come, those would come from the state. So we have, we're monitoring that. And if that test doesn't happen, then, that doesn't happen, then there's, they're working on a smarter balance type of test that's gonna be used K, A, or grades three through eight. And there's, it'd be a smarter balance test for high school. Also, the high school test, regardless of what it is, is moving to eleventh grade. And all of our testing is moving to the spring in twenty fifteen. And that's about it. We can move to questions and see.
I do want to interject something, Mike. With all the information Mike gave you, I think the important thing to walk out of here with is that many people really put an emphasis on standardized tests and state tests and those kinds of things. As a district, as Mike spoke very well on, we do a whole lot more than just take a state test and, and that's the measure of our district. And, you know, when you get, if you get confronted by people, what do you think about the KCE or when the Smarter Balance comes out? That's just one small piece, you know? We don't look at isolated data. We look at cumulative data. And that's far more important that we find out not only one measure, but ten measures on a student. Because that'll give us the increments that we need to be conscious of as kids need to, as we need to look at where kids need to grow and, and achieve even more. So I'm not a fan of standardized tests. I think the only reason we have to do it is because of federal accountability. As, as anybody would tell you, for years and years and years, WKCE was nothing more than accountability piece. It never, ever measured student growth. We had to implement things like, you know, the different assessments that we do. But we also, as Mike said, we have to take into account what happens in the classroom as far as assessments and not just some, you know, national standardized test. It's, it's far more than that and we do a whole lot more than that. So nice job, Mike, on that.
Dr. Petz, I've heard you talk about how our graduation rate can be affected by us having the prison in our district. Do any of these test scores, are those, are those the same way?
Are they what?
But the ACT doesn't cover everybody, so maybe it would be fair to reason that they're not taking the ACT. So that wouldn't be part of, because I'm looking at the other eighteen schools that are ahead of us on the ACT scores, which of course is what we're striving to close that gap a little bit.
Yeah, what's, the graduation rate is what you see with the effect of the, the correctional facility. But we, the kids there are generally too old to participate in WKCE. We haven't had anybody there take the WKCE, I think, since I've been here. There might have been one, you know, a long time ago. Because our, our testing policy reads that you need to be with your, your grade, the, your peers. And it's not credits. So our kids come in and they might, they might be seventeen or eighteen and they go to the House of Correction and they might have credits to be a tenth grader. Well, that's not what we're using as criteria. What we're using as criteria is their age, more or less their age and where their grade would be. Otherwise, you'd have kids come in here and they take a WKCE someplace in the county. And then they'd come and they'd have to take it again. And, you know, in high school. And the law only requires one administration. So generally speaking, our, our test scores aren't affected by.
So there, okay. And then another question I had is, I'm looking at one of the pages on here where you have the, the grades and then the different years. That's not eighth grade through those different years? That's the eighth grader and how they would have scored through their time throughout?
Uh, it depends which one you're looking at.
Okay. Well, I was like a page twenty of forty-two. I, I thought you had mentioned like, for instance, or let's say tenth grade. The twenty-twelve and thirteen score. And then the twenty-eleven and twelve score, is that for tenth graders that were tenth graders the year before? Or is that the tenth graders who are tenth graders now?
Who were in tenth grade that year.
Okay, that's what I thought. I thought you had mentioned somewhere where it followed their scores throughout.
There's a different chart in there that follows a group.
That's been one of the problems of WKCE over the years, that they did not have cohort groups. You looked at a measure of tenth graders and they would look at the next year's tenth graders. It wasn't the same kids.
Changes, exactly.
It changed, so that's why.
When I heard you say that, I thought that was interesting because now you can follow. Well, it's not exactly the same group, but you can still kind of follow it through.
And that's why we have all the other measures to do that with.
Right. And then you have to consider that there's different kids in a group each year. We have about two-hundred students every year. Even if you have the same number of kids in a group each year, about two-hundred kids are different in our enrollment every year. So if you figure that out, it's about five percent in any grade. So they're generally the same kids, but some different kids in there that you have to take that into consideration when you follow a group.
Ken, the other chart I just found, it is on page four.
Oh, good. Thank you.
Sure.
And we've got a lot of this at the National Association of School Board Conference about this, the change in the testing and the change in the proficiencies and trying to raise the bar. I noticed that when you looked at the comparison, the math scores, well, they, well, they both fell. The reading scores fell considerably more than the math scores. I think that's also another emphasis. They were talking about you put these problems in a paragraph for them to solve a math problem. And they're just not getting it.
Yeah, right.
I have a question about the ACT scores. I know a lot of students take it more than once. Does every, every administration count towards that average? Or is it just the student's best score?
That's a good question. I, I don't know. I'm not sure.
I believe it's, Mike, we looked into that a couple of years ago. I believe it's the best score.
The best score, yeah. Not the last one, the best one.
The best one.
Do you know on the PSAT, how does it tell what type of college you should attend? Large, small, public or private? How could it tell that?
It's, it's just like the ACT. I mean, the counselors use it with all the other information they know about the, about the kids. The same thing could be said about the ACT test. Because there's a, an air. the ACT test, because there's a, an area that the kids fill out that has to do with their interest, as well as their, what they know in the subject areas.
Do you know of any wealthier districts that pay for AP exams?
Pay for them?
Yeah.
Not that I'm aware. I haven't heard that discussed at any director's meetings.
A lot of districts used to when they were small in numbers, and all of a sudden they grew out of it real quick when the numbers increased.
Okay.
The table on the top of page 25, the number of tests for nine and 10, there's, they don't look correct, but I don't know. I couldn't even guess what.
Page 25?
Ours is 38, 38 of 42, I guess.
Oh, yeah, that, it looks like the numbers got, something's, uh, squished over in the columns.
Was that what it was?
It's.
If you move the.
See that?
Just looks like these numbers.
Oh, yeah.
So.
The, the, some other chart numbers just got shifted and slid over.
Oh.
So.
Number of tests.
So it'll be 327, 341, 301?
Are you on 30 of 42 on that page?
Thirty-eight of 42.
Thirty-eight of 42.
The top table.
Oh, the MAP one? Okay.
Advanced Placement Exam Summary? Got number of tests, number of passed, number.
Oh, the summary box?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah, yeah, right. Oh, Linda asked me about that. I have a correction on that. Thanks for bringing that up. Where it's, where it's, it shows that we gave 34,000 tests?
Yes.
Yeah, Sean, I couldn't believe we were talking about that. In 2009, that number was 270. And in 2010, it was 342. That was just a typo or a, a formula or something that was an error on that table. 270 and 342.
I'm guessing number of passed is also wrong, or?
Uh, no, those are correct.
It's quite lower than, than either.
Percentage?
Either year. Eight was 228, and you're saying it's 55 and 68, and then back to 340?
Are you, what year are you looking at?
Nine and 10. The number, the next column over doesn't, the trend does not look correct.
Oh, I see what you mean. Yeah, maybe those are incorrect, too. I'm not sure. This, we're using this table from previous years, and might have got copied all over incorrectly.
It's got to be wrong, because we've increased passing percentages every year.
Yeah.
Dramatically.
Right. Well, from last year to this year, it's a real nice increase to 82%. And then...
And then the chart below has that spike in 11. Nice. Rec 53.
Yeah, on the AP test?
AP Scholar Award, yeah. That was a nice.
Right, right. Yeah, and those are, yeah, and it's just backed down to kind of in a row. It was a big year.
Big year?
Yeah.
Overachievers in that year and graduate.
Still trending up.
I guess in general, then, I know we, we really, I think, strengthened our, our reading program with our change in curriculum and also the math. We, I hope that we might think that makes an impact on this.
Yeah.
Are you watching for that?
In math, we're in the first year of implementation, now, really, with the, the, the addition of the math program that we're using. And it's the first one, and it's got the common core in it. So it's, we haven't had a WKCE with any of that teaching behind us yet, so that one, can't, kind of can't really tell. We're in the second year of implementation with the workshop model, and, and the scores, right, reflect that there, there may be what you refer to as an implementation dip, when something new is started, and it's big, and it's significant, and then things pick up later. We, we anticipate that the, the common core in reading and math is going to, the expectations there are different, the, the teaching and the, the curriculum are, are, you know, they're, they're, everything has moved up and is, is, is stronger, and we anticipate better performance over time.
Can I just interject? We're monitoring MAPs, to Dr. Petz's point, very closely, and we're seeing unbelievable gains in student achievement right now in MAPs under those two curriculums. Math was significant. Kids in the advanced level, they, they have goals they need to achieve, and they were achieving their end-of-the-year goals at mid-year when we gave the test in seventh and eighth grade. So the teachers are very, very excited about it, because the learning is so different and so more, much more rigorous than it was. So they're watching and along with us very closely those MAPs scores, which we put a great deal of merit on. And part of that, we attribute to the response to intervention work that we're doing with the students at all the levels, and you'll hear about that in June at that report. So we're, we're, works, we don't know what will happen with the WKC test, because it's going to be a very different kind of test, but we're very excited about the data we're monitoring internally.
One area that we are not up to our standards in is science. And we are going to be putting a significant and an aggressive approach into that program, particularly at the high school level. And that falls into a little bit of what you'll hear related to Nick's report on personalized learning and some of those things. But that's an area where we need to make some progress, particularly in, in terms of AP exams and many, many things like that. That's not to say we're not doing good things. I don't mean that at all. But it needs a, a jump start, if you will. And we're going to aggressively be taking a look at that between now and the end of the year, so that we implement some things for next year.
Thank you for the report. Thank you. Item C is the treasures report, and I think we'll turn to Mrs. Wackowski if you're prepared.
So I guess I should be reading that. Is that correct?
Yes.
Let me just get back there. Okay. Treasure Report for April 2013. Prior to May 22nd, we anticipate cash requirements in the amount of $4 million for the April 30th and May 15th payrolls and accounts payable. In the general fund, we have $18,412,251. And in the debt service fund, we have $2,576,983.
Thank you. And then item D, we have a resolution authorizing the issuance and awarding the sale of approximately $9,995,000, general obligation refunding bonds. This is an action item. Mr. Milzer?
Yes. In December, we had authorized bond anticipation notes to take advantage of bank qualification that we had for that year. And I mentioned then, in the last time we borrowed, that we would be back, and we would need to sell bonds to pay those notes off. And the bonds are the long-term instruments that we use, excuse me, for funding our projects, namely the project at the high school. So this is a portion of that. And we, we did that today. There is a sheet that I gave you that has some information on it. So these are general obligation refunding bonds in the amount of $9,995,000. We went out for bid today. We did get a bid of 3.0422, and the winning bidder that bid that was Bosc Incorporated. It was, was a little different than last time, even in the two months since we were out last time in the market. The market has changed, not necessarily for the better for us, but, but banks are thinking that things are going to get better. So last time, we had an interest rate of two and a half, and now we're at three. And the, the explanation for that was that they're not really looking to tie up their money right now. They're thinking that things are going to get better, and they're going to make a little more, so they're kind of holding off. And we wanted to, we still wanted to tie this down, because the feeling was that if we wait, we may get more bids, but they might all be higher than this, reflecting the trend. So we wanted to go ahead, get this tied down, accept this bid, so that we can move ahead with the bonds and pay off of those notes. And then we'll be, we'll be set on our financing for the high school project. So we just need a, a motion authorizing the issuance and awarding the sale of $9,995,000 in general obligation refunding bonds.
So you don't need the word approximately in there?
Uh, no, that was for the agenda.
Okay.
Just in case it was $9,994,000, we wouldn't have to have another meeting. So that was approximate, but this is a done deal at that amount.
And this was competitively bid, correct?
Yes.
How many bidders did we get?
One.
There's only one?
Mm-hmm.
Doesn't make it too competitive, though. And how long are the bonds for?
Generally, they're about 20 years. These are about 18. Up to the bond life. I think they calculated about 18 point something.
Well, as a comparison, we sold our bonds at the county on Tuesday. We sold our bonds, the 20-year bonds, for 1.64, is what we got for a 20-year bond. We had like four bidders, so it's interesting.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Difference. And we were also surprised, the, the rate, even though 1.64 is the lowest we've ever had, we were expecting like 1.3. So there was a, a change in the market, like you said.
Right.
Recently.
Well, just to clarify, we competitively bid it. We just didn't have people who chose to competitively bid, right?
Right. These were bank-qualified.
Right.
Usually that expands the number of bidders.
Not always. It depends on the market. When we've done construction projects in the past, there are times we got zero bidders.
Yeah.
Do I hear a motion as presented by Mr. Milzer?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Klein. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Evans?
Aye.
Mrs. Klein?
Aye.
Mrs. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Alexandrovich?
Aye.
I will say yes. Mrs. Wackowski?
Aye.
Mr. Nielsen?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item 12, I'd like to entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss employment, non-renewal, and performance evaluation data per named District Franklin Educational Association, FEA, members and employees pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85, sub-1, sub-C, and 118.22. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mrs. Schlitter. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. May I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Larson?
Aye.
Mrs. Wackowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klein?
Aye.
Mr. Nielsen?
Aye.
Mrs. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Alexandrovich?
Aye.
And I say yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. And do we need a recess? Okay, we'll take a four-minute recess, and we're going into closed session at 7:20. Okay, we are back in open session at 7:32. The next item on the agenda is the board meeting debriefing. Does anyone have any comments about the meeting today? I want to thank the administrators for the reports. They're very thorough. There's a lot of work put into those reports, so thank you. Any other comments?
I guess I'm going to ask. I know for the, some of the voting for the officers, I'm, and I guess I'm curious as to why you wouldn't vote one way or the other on the voting for officers or voting for leadership on the board.
I didn't feel like I was in support 100% of the nomination, so, but there was no other nominee, so that's why I abstained. Are there any other?
That would be my thing. I, I, I can't throw my support behind someone or something that I don't have faith or trust in or respect in, so.
Are there any other comments for debriefing? Okay. Future agenda items. High school personalized learning report on May 8th. Music curriculum review executive summary, May 22nd. Technology report, May 22nd.
If we think we can have this adjourned, we're in the first meeting in June.
I believe we'll also have a report on the national convention. Mrs. Wackowski, you reported you'll be out of town.
Yes.
Um, the end of May?
Yes. Is there any chance any of these, I mean, usually our second meeting is, is our, our fuller meeting, but I was wondering if maybe the technology report might be available earlier? Step-two reports? I know we're having the personalized learning, but they ask him.
Well, we prefer to leave it there. It's, it's the ideal time for them. They're coming off the end-of-the-year assessment, or end-of-the-year, end-of-the-year evaluation of the technology. It's, it's an ideal place for us to have it there. Those two should not be too lengthy of reports. Wouldn't think they haven't been in the past.
And Luann has committees she works with, which she has meetings scheduled, so if she moves that, she's not going to get input from the voice of the people that work on that report. So I, I know she would be disappointed if she couldn't get their feedback into finalizing that report. So that would be, I know, her request to leave it.
Okay, do I hear a motion to adjourn? Make a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mrs. Klein. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nielsen. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Okay, we are adjourned at 7:36.